All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Sorry about the delay. Today is a regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council. It is Monday, July 28, 2025. Before we begin our regular legislative meeting, we do have individual committee meetings. Before we jump into that, just be sure to have your phone on silent or turned off and council members ensure your microphones are turned on. A week away, listening to myself on here, I talk way too loud in it. All right, so we're going to start with City Properties, Parks and Recreation with Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's July 28, 2025, at 6:16 here in council chambers. All members of committee are present. Other council is noted and guest is noted on the sheet. One request for legislation, a letter from Stacy Carr requesting legislation to allow Mayor William Judge to enter an agreement with the dear says or asset management for the purpose of obtaining certain tax liens, one reading and emergency wording requested. We have to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Invote Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 304. It's not on the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. And we need to invoke Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 401, not called for at committee of the whole. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One more motion to amend the legislation to read a letter from Stacy Carr requesting legislation to allow Mayor William Judge to enter into an agreement with the dear asset management for the purpose of obtaining certain tax liens with the ad of "in the historic district." Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Any remarks? Any questions on what just happened? Okay, because I'm surprised it went so smoothly. Can I get a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. I think that's it. We're going to move on to pending legislation. We have a letter from Mayor Judge requesting the appointment of Ms. Nina Angeloff to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term immediately and ending 12/31/2026. Do I got any questions or remarks on that? Hearing none. Any miscellaneous discussion from the committee? Nobody? The gallery? No? Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, I saw online today on social media that the splash pad is working. Is that correct?
I heard half working, so maybe...
Half working. Are they testing things out?
I'm not sure how many attachments are working, but it was functioning today.
That's great news.
And I do have a phone call message in to Mr. Patterson. It was after 5 o'clock when I called, so what I hear tomorrow, I will forward an email and you guys can help spread the word. Looks good. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We'll go with Ms. Gerhardt, too. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. With that, we adjourn at 6:20 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Easterling. Next up is Public Welfare and Safety with Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the Public Welfare and Safety Committee to order. Today's date is July 28, 2025, 6:20 p.m. We're here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mr. Easterling as co-chair, Ms. Gerhardt, Mr. Greer. All other members of council are present. All guests are noted on my sheet. We have no request for legislation. We do have ordinance number 95-2025 as pending legislation. I'd like to amend that. Can we amend that now? Being that it's, we haven't read it yet. I want to amend it, take the emergency clause out of it, let it go to three readings. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We have nothing else. Anything from my committee? Like, we do have another piece of pending legislation here. Ordinance number 101-2025 is the appropriation Police Department and ordinance appropriating $10,000 from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the police department's operating and maintenance budget of the general fund. We'll be voting on that. Anything else from my committee? Other council members? The gallery? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We are adjourned at 6:22.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up is rules marking development. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, President Greer. At this time, I'd like to bring the Rules Marking and Development Committee to order. It is Monday, July 28, 2025. The time is 6:23 p.m. We are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mrs. Beck as co-chair, Mr. Heidick and President Greer. All other council members and guests as noted on my sheet. I have requests for legislation and ordinance of the city of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barberton at the next regular November election certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the city entitled Administrative Departments, specifically Section 4.02b, to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the Building Commissioner and declaring an emergency. We're going to have to do what Mr. Easterling did a few minutes ago. So can I have a motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Rule 302, the 10-day rule?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then a motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Rule 304, not on the agenda. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Rule 402, not called for at the committee of the whole. Can I have a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any conversation about this or can I have a motion to call for it?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have pending legislation, ordinance 96-2025. This is the CDBG Annual Action Plan and ordinance of the council of the city of Barberton to approve the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and declaring an emergency. We also have Holly Miller with the county here to talk about the home repair program. Do you want to come up?
I guess so. I thought Stacy was going to lead in, but I guess it's me. So my name is Holly Miller. I am the Assistant Director in the Department of Community and Economic Development under your County Executive, Eileen Shapiro. And the county is very excited to be able to partner with the city of Barberton with your community development block grant funds. So I've come before you, many times before, and if you're new and I haven't, I'm sorry. We can have coffee later and I can tell you even more. But we are very excited to be able to take your CDBG funds and collaborate with our other funding sources. So out of our department, we house the Home Weatherization Assistance Program, the Lead Safe Program, the Lead Abatement Program, and for some of those outliers in Barberton, we have a septic replacement or sewer connection program if they have EPA orders. So what we're going to be able to do is to have one application, and we have, I think, some this evening, that we'll be able to give to your residents, and these are going to be for owner-occupied homes, single-family homes in Barberton. One application that a resident will complete, and then from that application, we will be able to determine what programs the county has that we'll be able to utilize for that resident that income qualifies, and where there is a gap or something that I do not have a program to cover that already exists in some accounting. We will then utilize your community development block grant funds. So an example would be a person applies because they need a new furnace. I send my team out, we determine, yes, they need a new furnace, they need a new hot water tank, and they need insulation in their home. The Home Weatherization Assistance Program is going to cover that, and that's a grant to that homeowner. But I can't do the insulation because the roof is actively leaking. I don't have minor home repair dollars in the city of Barberton because you get your own CDBG funds. What this agreement and this partnership allows us to do is replace that roof using your CDBG dollars and then go and provide all the weatherization services using the county home weatherization funding. So we're leveraging your dollars. Let's say that same home doesn't need, I get in an application from you, from your residents, that home doesn't need a new roof, but it does need new furnace, new hot water tank, insulation, and the windows have lead-based paint on them, or presumed lead-based paint, because I have two different lead-based paint programs. And you also have housing orders on that house because of the windows. I'm able to use Lead Safe or Lead Abatement, my H-WAP programs, and I'm not even going to use your CDBG dollars because I don't need them. So the resident made their way to us through your application process, but I didn't use any of your funds, which means I'm able to take that grant and make it go further and serve more people in your community with your CDBG funds. We'll have specific CDBG applications. We already do an application intake day at the Barberton Library. We're going to up that and do another one. We can also look at expanding that and maybe doing something at the Active Adult Center on a weekend to promote the program and take applications. We're also working with the building department to put out flyers that we're looking for qualified contractors that have all the certifications that we require to work on our programs. So we'll get that flyer out here in the next few weeks. Our goal is to have this program go live on August 1st, so we will do joint mailers, joint letterhead, joint applications, everything so that it is a true partnership. One of the new programs that we are just launching is our Older Adult Home Modification Program. We got money from HUD, a little over $2 million, to assist elderly individuals age in place with home modifications. So we may get an application where somebody is like, look, everything's fine in my home, I just need a grab bar to get in and out of my house to complete my activities of daily living. We have trained individuals that will go to that home through that application that came in from your Barberton resident. We will install the grab bars, the smoke alarms, if they haven't already gotten them, from the fire department, but we'll also make sure they have one on every floor sleeping area and where they like to nap. We will also make sure that they have reflective address labeling so that first responders can easily identify their home. And then we will work with them to see if they have any other needs and put them into a system called Unite Us. So if they had food instability, or maybe they need an emergency response call button, the help I follow and I can't get up buttons, we're able to put them into that closed-loop referral system and get those additional needs for them outside of what the county can provide and what the city can provide. But again, that came to us from this joint application and this new partnership that really we've never been able to have before. I come, I tell you, and I ask, please bring us your residents, but you know, this is going to get us in their front door and tell them what all we can provide to them. I believe if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be able to put my office's telephone number on the bottom of the housing orders so that when you hand out the housing orders, there's a problem, there's a potential solution now. So again, all of that, and we want to kick off in August. This is a pilot program. The first contract is just pilot. If it works well, then our hopes are to have another CDBG contract with you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if I, I don't know how it works here. If I'm calling you, if the president, I don't know how it works here.
Did you have your hand up?
I did.
Go ahead.
Okay. You talked about an intake day?
Yes.
Is that the only day they can apply or that's...
No, they can apply anytime, but this is, so we don't take walk-ins at our office. One, because we're remodeling the Ohio Building and I have to relocate for a year. And two, it's just, it's, Barberton to downtown doesn't seem like it's a lot, but when you're elderly, it's a lot. So we will step up our intake days here and, you know, we'll have, we try to do, you'll have, what's coming up next? Cherry blossom? Is that next? Momfest? Momfest? Don't say cherry blossom. Sorry. I meant cherry pie. Sounds really good from Leeches. But we'll have something, then we'll have a table down there. And again, whatever you think, if you have your own ward meetings, I know way back in the day before COVID, people had ward meetings, we would come to those. If you're having those again, we can do that. If there is a local place of worship you think that we should go to, Rotary, Kiwanis, we have a whole outreach team that can go out and present at those places, and we'll put applications wherever you think they should be.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Income based.
Eighty percent of area median income for everything except home weatherization. That's 200% of area poverty level, but it's real close.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come this evening.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming.
All right, so that will be being voted on this evening. We will also be voting on all of the charter amendments. Would we like to go through those at this time?
I would encourage reading through each one, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just in case somebody has a remark.
Okay, if you want to look at your agenda for our meeting later, page three, first one is Section 1.01 to add language to allow the city to detach and declaring an emergency. Page four, Section 4.03 to include qualifications for the city of Barberton's safety director position. And Section 4.02 include qualifications for the city of Barberton's service director position. And Section 4.02 to include stormwater matters in the city of Barberton's service director responsibilities. And Section 404 to amend the qualifications for the city of Barberton's finance director position. Stop me if you have anything to say. And Section 4.05 to amend the qualifications for the city of Barberton law director position. And Section 4.05F to allow the, to allow and authorize the law director to make editorial corrections to the charter, which shall be approved by resolution of city council. Article five, Section 5.11, to remove the requirement that six public places in the municipality be established in public postings is selected for public notice. Page six, Section 6.01b, to remove that the planning commission shall review the official master plan of the municipality periodically and to add that the planning commission shall review the official master plan of the municipality every five years. Didn't remember that having two parts, Mrs. Miller.
I am so, Lori, put them in numerical order, and the order on my sheet is Justin's order, so I am like five ordinances behind you because I'm trying to make sure I didn't miss one, because Lori had a better way of putting them in order. So tell me which one you're looking at.
Look at some...
Page, which page on your agenda?
Will you grab a list?
I have one right here.
Oh, perfect. Page six, sorry.
Okay. And which one then?
The top of it.
Of view the official master plan? That one?
To remove that the planning commission shall review the official master plan?
To remove that the, it should be periodically to remove, remember, it was periodically and we made it be five years.
So that's what we're taking out, just that word?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
Next one, Section 6.03a, to remove the requirement that three members of the Parks and Recreation Board be appointed by the mayor and to remove the exceptions to the length of term served by the original members and to remove the requirement that the Barberton Board of Education appoint the two remaining members to the Parks and Rec Board. The bottom one, Section 6.04, to remove language allowing for a board of health and declaring an emergency. Page seven, in Section 6.04, to allow the Civil Service Commission to appoint the Director of Human Resources. In Section 6.04c, to remove language allowing for various boards and commissions and replace the language allowing for any boards and commissions. The next one, Section 6.09, to require all boards and commissions in this charter to video and/or audio broadcast. Article seven, entitled nominations and elections, allowing for nonpartisan elections. Page eight, revising Section 12.02 to change certain deadlines, eliminate partisan requirements, and require a public hearing. Section 4.02c to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the And Section 4.02d to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the Superintendent of Utilities. 4.02b to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the Building Don't we have quite a few more?
I thought so, too.
There should be 19.
My pages just ran out.
Okay. I counted 19 on my agenda. I have 19 drafts here, and I counted 19 on the agenda.
Someone might have had a text or page.
While you figure that out, Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to double check on page six, ordinance 114-2025. I need to double check that there is emergency wording on that.
I'm sorry, one moment. That matches.
I've got 19.
So that was all of them?
Yeah, I got 19.
I have 19 on my agenda and 19 drafts. And which one was that, Taylor? I can write it up.
114-2025.
But can you tell me what the subject is?
Oh, sorry. This is for Section 6.03a, to remove the requirement for the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the only one on here that doesn't say declaring an emergency.
I know, I'm looking. You're correct. That's correct. It is not even on the ordinance either. So that's an error on our part.
Okay, so that'll have to be amended on my agenda for it to go to the ballot if it passes.
That, that's the error of my...
And declaring an emergency.
So we're in committee, so you could add...
Can I have a motion to amend that, to add and declaring an emergency?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Apologies.
Good catch, Mrs. Thompson. Mrs. Miller, on the ones where we're changing the appointments, isn't there two parts to that?
Let me make sure I'm answering the right question. I, you guys may not have it, but I have Justin's list, which is like how I've been trying to maintain some sort of order over doing these ordinances today. So are you speaking to the appointing authority for engineer, utilities, and building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So in my world, that's seven, eight, and 24. So, one second. So if, on the draft, it is deleting one word and striking another, so if you go to Section 3, it says that the foregoing proposal, it's Section 4.02c of the Article 4 shall be amended and replaced with the additional language of Section 4.2c, Article 4 therein. So it's...
So it's on yours?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Shree?
Yes, I just had one question, Chair. So on page seven, ordinance 118-2025, with the all boards and commissions in the charter to video and/or audio broadcast, so being Chair of the ZBBA, is this going to require live audio broadcasting? Or is this, I mean, we already record, I know we had discussion on maybe not including video. Ms. Thompson had brought that up just because of the, to kind of help protect some of the members. But I just, I didn't know if this was live, to where we have to stream it, or if this was, or what the intent was here.
Thought the hope was for all those to be live, or is it just for them to be recorded? Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Chair. When we, excuse me, when we talked, it was to either, it was to publish the video or audio recording. It doesn't specify live, but it specifies that it has to be video and/or audio and then published to the city site or whatever it means.
I was just curious, because when it says broadcast, to me, that's something that's done live, if you're broadcasting, so.
No, the word live was never in there.
No? Okay. Mr. Greer, did you have anything on that one?
I just wanted to double tap with legal, because I know we talked about the word broadcast before, and that did mean live.
Yeah, that was...
Okay.
Should I say recording?
I would strike the word broadcast if you don't mean it's live.
Can I have a motion to strike the word broadcast?
I'll make that motion.
Page seven.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Lori, it's page seven, and it's 118.
And we are just striking out the word broadcast?
Correct.
Also, on the second page for the charter amendment, sample ballot language, it would substitute broadcast for recorded, then.
It's back here on page eight. And can I have a vote for that, please? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes. It's back here on page eight.
Okay. Aye.
Yes, sir.
I think Ms. Miller said we have to head recorded?
That's on the second page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But second or back page, depending if you have front and back. So in the first, in where it says Section 609, and then I just deleted the word broadcast, and then on the second page or backside, shall it be amended, you know, in video and/or audio? I substituted the word broadcast for recorded. So there was two on one ordinance.
So I need to make a new motion to add the word recorded? Can I have a motion to add the word recorded?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
and then on the second page or backside, shall it be amended, you know, in video and/or audio, I substituted the word broadcast for recorded. So there was two on one ordinance.
So I need to make a new motion to add the word recorded? Can I have a motion to add the word recorded?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for having us go over this clearly, it was necessary. President Greer? All right, anything else that we saw, caught, questioned? Thank you for all your hard work on this, Mrs. Miller.
I want to, in front of everybody, thank Hannah Ramsey and our intern from the law school, Ron Stewart. We plowed through this today and worked really hard to get it to you, and I apologize for the last minute, but Council President Greer and I discussed it, it's been a very difficult process trying to get, with the Board of Elections, to try to get what we needed to do, so this is the solution that President Greer had come up with and we executed that today.
Thank you both.
Everything that's in here is what has been discussed since April, so there's no surprises. But I do appreciate the amendments to clear up the error.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mayor?
Oh, Mayor?
Quick question on page eight, with ordinance 121, 122, 123, giving the appointing authority for these three positions to the Service Director who was appointed by the mayor. What other cities with a strong mayor form of government like Barberton has this type of setup?
I don't have my charter notes with me, I wish we would have talked about that earlier.
Are there other cities that have that though? Could you send that to me?
Sure. Mrs. Angelo?
Before I say anything, I just want to apologize because I hadn't been coming to the council meetings, but you have the Service Director appointing these positions, engineer and whatnot. How do you know that that Service Director's going to be there for the rest of that year? I mean, if he appoints somebody in January, he's not obligated to stay, he or she, the Service Director, they're not obligated to stay. And I was downstairs, we went through six Service Directors in eighteen years, so I don't understand how, and I apologize because I haven't been listening to anything with that word, but how, when you have an elected official doing that, they're there for four years, they've been elected by the people and their terms four years, but when you have a Service Director, they could leave, I mean, they could find another position, which we've had Service Directors leave. What happens then? Does that person that he appointed as an engineer, does he leave then, then the new Service Director has to hire somebody on engineering? I don't understand the commitment. You don't have a commitment to a Service Director as you would an elected official.
I would, you may not have caught it, every one of those positions would be classified, so there wouldn't, they would be classified positions, currently they're unclassified, the amendment was to make them classified.
Do we have any more discussion on these?
Seeing none, can I have a motion to exit this committee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this meeting is adjourned at 6:46 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. Next up is Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson?
Insurance, not utilities.
Well, give me a second. I'm going off memory because I have a thousand papers here. Utilities. It is utilities. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. All right, City Utilities, Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Time, 6:47, City Utilities. I would like to call this meeting to order today, July 28th, here in Council Chambers. All members of my committee are present, Jennifer Hager and myself as Chair, Melanie Beck and Justin Greer. We have no new legislation to call for tonight, but we have pending legislation that we will be voting on. The first one is Resolution Number 98-2025, title OPWC Funding Application, 14th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 16th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 19th Street Replacement Project, and the Concrete Roadway Replacement Project, including Benton Street, Brighton Circle, Isaiah Circle, Saxon Circle, and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Barberton to prepare and submit a funding application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the 14th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 16th Street Replacement Project, 19th Street Replacement Project, and the Concrete Roadway Replacement Project, including Benton, Brighton Circle, Isaiah Circle, and Saxon Circle, and declaring it an emergency. Next, ordinance number 103-2025, entering into cooperation agreement, City of Norton and the City of Barberton, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into joint applications between the City of Norton and the City of Barberton to apply for the Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC State Capital Improvement Program, SCIP, and declaring it an emergency. Do I have any remarks for the latest discussion? I can gallery, audience. Do I have a motion to?
You have a question?
No, this is, uh.
You've got one more that's pending. If you'll read that as well.
Resolution Number 100-2025, First Energy Reliability of the Service. A resolution of the City of Barberton condemning the first energy reliability of service and distribution of a public utility and requesting a hundred dollar credit to the City of Barberton residential ratepayers and declaring it an emergency. Do I have any discussion on that? So we'll be voting on this tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. Second?
A second.
Thank you, anyway. We are adjourned at 6:51 with our end.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And again, finally, Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the Finance and Personnel Committee to order, it is Monday, July 28th, 2025, 6:52 PM here in Council Chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as Chair, Mr. Heidig, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Greer, as well as all other council members and guests as noted on my sheet. We have a few pieces of pending legislation this evening, the first being ordinance number 97-2025, title appropriation Fire Department, so appropriate $24,363.02 in two cents from the unappropriated line item of the General Fund to the Fire Department's operation and maintenance budget in the General Fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 99-2025, title appropriation Streets Department, Concrete Road Program, so appropriate $230,000 from the unappropriated line item of the Street Capital Fund to the capital budget of the Street Capital Fund and declaring an emergency. And last but not least, we've got ordinance number 101-2025, title appropriation Police Department, and ordinance appropriating $10,000 from the unappropriated item of the General Fund to the Police Department's operating and maintenance budget of the General Fund and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks on any of that? Is there any miscellaneous discussion for Finance and Personnel? Anything from the gallery? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
In a second? We are adjourned at 6:53.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings for this evening. We do have a long legislative meeting, so we're going to take a five-minute break just to catch up, but it's a strict five minutes, we'll try to be back here by 7:00 PM and start.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening everybody. Today is July 28, 2025. This is a regular legislative meeting for Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by indication by Councilwoman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance and wisdom, allowing us to have meaningful discussions and make decisions while remaining focused on what is best for our community. Please keep our military and first responders safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
President here.
President.
Mr. Heidick.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Haber.
Here.
Mr. Easterlake.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mrs. Beck.
Here.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
All right. Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, July 14, 2025 as presented. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the regular legislative session from Monday, July 14, 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second that motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, July 14, 2025 as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Minutes are adopted. Approval of the minutes of the executive session held on Monday, July 21, 2025 as presented. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the approval of the minutes of the executive session from Monday, July 21, 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second that motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the executive session held on Monday, July 21, 2025 as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The executive session minutes are adopted. Finance report. Acceptance of the finance department report for the month of June, 2025 as presented. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the acceptance of the finance report for the month of June, 2025 as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion for acceptance.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to accept the finance department report for the month of June, 2025 as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Finance report is accepted. Petitions and claims?
We have them.
Matters requested?
They have all been discussed.
Thank you. Citizens addressing council. I didn't see any. Did you check?
Hmm.
Is there any citizens that would like to address a council?
Is there Mrs. Robinson? Yes, Mrs. Robinson is here to speak.
Mrs. Robinson, if you can just step up here to state your name, address, and the reason for speaking. Then you got five minutes.
I'm sorry. I'm a...I feel like, as my mother would say, a cat in a room full of rocking chairs. And please don't make me explain that to you. I am Nancy Robinson. I live at 474 Franklin Avenue. My husband and I have...my husband and I have lived here for five years. In the five years that I have...we have lived here, I have come to like Barberton. Not that I would not, but I grew up in Akron and I just hardly ever made it to Barberton. I don't know why. But what I'm here for tonight is to talk to you about Relay for Life. Relay for Life is very, very dear to my heart, as I'm sure it probably is to you guys too. At some point in time, you have probably...
Didn't I just say that?
You did. You changed us.
What's that?
So as of right now, we are going to take a recess until the all-clear is given for this. The siren's going off.
Didn't we determine that this is like the safest building to be in?
Uh, yeah. And the basement is the safest place to be.
Well, let's go there.
So that's where you guys come on break.
All right, we're going to continue. I know we've kind of broke that up without a motion for a recess, but given the circumstances, there was a town NADA warning, and we're coming back. So we're just going to pick up where we left off. Here it is, 7:29 for the record, and...
Okay. Again, I am here for Relay for Life. I have been in with Relay probably close to 20 years. Most of my time was in Virginia when I lived down there. Relay has changed tremendously. In case you didn't know, Relay started back in 1985. Dr. Gordon, as we call him Gordy, Platt, on his own, walked around the track for 24 hours. Walked or run, ran by himself for 24 hours, and he raised $27,000 that night, or that day. The following year, he started Relay itself for the 24-hour event, and in '92, oh, at that time, they raised $30 million. In '92, it became ACS Relay for Life. The Relay mission statement is that no one... Okay, let's try this again. "The hope that those lost to cancer will never be forgotten, that those who face cancer will be supported, and that one day cancer will be eliminated." In 2004, $386 million at 5,034 sites through the U.S. and 20 other countries, and that was with 4 million participants. I'm not somebody that knows a lot of everything about Relay. I know what I know, and just enough to be dangerous, is what I figure, always say. Relay for Life is a movement of a community of like-minded survivors, caregivers, caregivers and volunteers, and participants who believe that the future can be free from cancer, and that's what I believe. Just recently, I lost two friends, childhood friends, from cancer, and I know, I'm sure, somebody in here has known somebody who battles cancer or has fighting cancer right now. I know back in the day, Mayor Judge told me it was a big thing here in Barberton for Relay for Life, but then ACS decided that they would merge all the cities into one, you know, Summit County, all this, all the different counties instead, and in my opinion, that messed up the whole thing. Our event is on August 16th, and it's going to be at Lot 3. I have tried my best to get it to come back to Barberton. It has not. I have not been vocal enough evidently, and some people find that hard to believe, that I couldn't be vocal enough to get it to come here. Even though our event is August 16th, it doesn't mean that we stop trying to raise money for Relay for Life. And I know, I can't, I'm sorry, my mind went blank. Lacy, is that her name? And I know she's battling cancer. In fact, I'm going to try to reach out to her and invite her to our event, and I think that's wonderful. I think it's wonderful when you have a group of people that come together for somebody that is battling cancer or anything. But Relay for Life does not stop. You donate to this poor girl, which I think is wonderful, but you're going to walk away. Relay for Life does not walk away. I have walked the 24-hour track in the heat, in the rain, whatever. I have pushed people on their wheelchairs because they could not go. Relay for Life fights for all of us who are battling cancer. Everybody that, even if you are battling cancer, to Relay's eyes, you are still a survivor. You are going to be a survivor till you take that last breath. So I know it's too late. I have tried, you, the council has been very, very busy, and I was kind of hesitant to even try to come in to talk to you because I know you're, I watch all of them, so I know what's been going on. So, as I said, even though it's over on the 16th, the event, I would like to be able to, with the council, council's help, or other people, to have like maybe a mini Relay here in Barberton, which we can, you know, just because the big one is in Lot 3, so to speak, and then we can still have a Relay of some sort here. I do not know the people I knew in Virginia. I mean, I knew a lot of people in the small town of Pulaski, Virginia, so it was easier for me to raise money, or talk to people, or do whatever. That's why I'm coming to you guys, to try to get you to help me, or direct me to the people, or whatever, to try to do something, because I don't want to have to go to another funeral. And I do get very emotional about it. My husband's a cancer survivor, and my best friend in Virginia died at a very early age from breast cancer. It's very, very hard. So I'm done because I don't want to cry, but thank you, thank you, thank you, bottom of my heart for letting me come in and talking to you. I do have a few things. It's not a lot because ACS, my ACS rep, she sent me some stuff and did not give me enough for Relay. She gave me for American Cancer Society. And just because Relay, there is all kinds of things that you can do with American Cancer Society. I'm also with ACS CAN, which goes down in lobbies in Columbus for the different things for Relay, or not just for Relay, for the American Cancer Society. So it's lots you can do, and me, I'm a big volunteer, in case nobody did that, and in fact, today, I volunteer at the National Cemetery, Veterans National Cemetery. So I was up here for nine hours today, in heat, but that's okay. I do it because I want to do it. I relay because I want to do it. I volunteer over at the, for the Mump Fest because I want to do it. At this point in time, really, I can't work anymore, or I could, but I don't think I could hire you, but everybody wants to volunteer. I was asked, why do I volunteer? Why? And I always answer, why not? Why wouldn't I volunteer? If you have the time to give back, instead of keep, take, take, take. So thank you all, thank you very, very much. I do appreciate it, and I hope, I hope. You will see me on Facebook. If anybody wants to check, if you want to talk to me after this, that's fine. I'm on Facebook. There's a lot of stuff. Some Accounting Relay for Life is what you can look up on Facebook. It's got all the information that you might need, or the website. So, thank you again. I appreciate it, and I hope you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, we're going to move into ordinances and resolutions. So first reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 95-2025, presented by Mr. Harris. This was amended on the floor tonight to remove the emergency warning, so this will be the first reading for this ordinance. Title, amend Barbara and codified ordinance, Chapter 670, Trees, Weeds, and Grass. An ordinance amending Barbara and codified ordinances, Chapter 607, Trees, Weeds, and Grass, to include three new sections. 670.06, nuisances, trees, shrubs, bushes, grass, and weeds. 670.07, abatement of declared nuisances, trees, shrubs, bushes, grasses, and weeds. And 670.08, assessment of cost by municipality of declared nuisances. This will go for second reading in September of the year. Ordinance number 96-2025, presented by Ms. Gerhart. Title, CDVG Annual Action Plan. The fiscal year 2025 through 2029, and ordinance of the Council of the City of Barberton to approve the fiscal year 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan, and the fiscal year 2025 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Annual Action Plan, AAP, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And just for clarification, was this in your committee, or was this forwarded to your committee?
It was in my committee.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Ms. Gerhart's movement on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 96-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Ms. Gerhart's movement for adoption.
Thank you. Motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to adopt ordinance number 96-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 97-2025, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, appropriation Fire Department. An ordinance appropriating $24,363.02 from the unappropriated line item of the general fund to the fire department's operation and maintenance budget in the general fund, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 97-2025.
Thank you. And Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to adopt ordinance number 97-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Resolution number 98-2025, presented by Mr. Griffin. Title, OPWC Funding Emplasia, 14th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 16th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 19th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, and the Concrete Roadway Replacement Project, including Benton Street
Replacement Project, and the Concrete Roadway Replacement Project, including Benton Street, Brighton Circle, Azalea Circle, and Saxon Circle, and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Barberton to prepare and submit a funding application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the 14th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 16th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, 19th Street Northwest Waterline Replacement Project, and the Concrete Roadway Replacement Project, including Benton Street, Brighton Circle, Azalea Circle, and Saxon Circle, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Griffin's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Mr. President.
I would like to second Mr. Griffin's motion for adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to adopt Resolution number 98 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 99 dash 2025. Thank you.
And, Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 99 dash 2025.
Thank you. And, Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 99 dash 2025.
Thank you. And, Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 99 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Resolution number 100 dash 2025, presented by Mr. Griffin and Mrs. Hager. Title, First Energy Reliability of Service. A resolution of the City of Barberton condemning First Energy's reliability of service and distribution of a public utility, and requesting a $100 credit to the City of Barberton's residential rate payers, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And, Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mr. Griffin's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Mr. President.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number 100 dash 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mr. Griffin's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to adopt Resolution number 100 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
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 Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?[1161.73]
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we can safely strike that one out.
Um... Yes, it does. All right, 103. Ordinance number 103 dash 2025 presented by Mr. Griffin. Title: Enter into operative agreement City of Norton and City of Barberton. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into joint applications between the City of Norton and the City of Barberton to apply for the Ohio Public Work Commission's OPWC State Capital Improvement Program as CIP and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mr. Griffin.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mr. Griffin's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Griffin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 103 dash 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mr. Griffin's motion on adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to adopt ordinance number 103 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ha. Okay. Not on the agenda. This was brought out of the Parks Commission Committee this evening where they voted to invoke rule, the council rule that suspended the 10-day rule, the not-on-the-agenda rule, and the non-presentative committee of the whole. Okay, so ordinance number 104 dash 2025. Title: Enter into agreement, Adare Asset Management. Presented by Mr. Easterling. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Barberton authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement with Adare Asset Management for the purpose of obtaining certain taxes in within the historic district and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that ordinance number 104 dash 2025 be adopted.
Thank you. And Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to adopt ordinance number 104 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that ordinance number 104 dash 2025 be adopted.
Thank you. And Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 105 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 105 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 106 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 105 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Not on the agenda. This was brought out of the Parks Commission Committee this evening where they voted to invoke rule, the council rule that suspended the 10-day rule, the not-on-the-agenda rule, and the non-presentative committee of the whole. Okay, so ordinance number 104 dash 2025. Title: Enter into agreement, Adare Asset Management. Presented by Mr. Easterling. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Barberton authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement with Adare Asset Management for the purpose of obtaining certain taxes in within the historic district and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion for adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 105 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 106 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Departments in Section 4.03 to include qualifications for the City of Barberton's safety director position and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 106 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 106 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Hyden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the council to consider this. When you look at, and my comments are going to go through this and the next one, so I won't bother with the next one here. I don't believe adding qualifications to the charter to appointed positions, not elected positions, appointed positions, is the right way to go. We can write our own. Times change. How many times are we going to have to ask the people to eliminate the Board of Health because we don't have a Board of Health? We had a Board of Health. We had our own health department. We don't have that. And here we are scrambling every time to remove that. Look 10 years from now at the two positions that are in front of us. Times will change. But if qualifications are embedded in this charter, I think we're asking the voters to solve a today problem and not a future problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyden. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right. Motion for adoption carries. Seven.
Ordinance number 107 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Departments in Section 4.02 to include qualifications for the City of Barberton's service director position and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 107 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 107 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Hyden?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right. Motion for adoption carries. Seven.
Ordinance number 107 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Departments in Section 4.02 to include qualifications for the City of Barberton's service director position and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 108 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 108 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance number 109 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Department in Section 4.04 to amend the qualifications for the City of Barberton's finance director position and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. A motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 109 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 109 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance number 110 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Departments in Section 4.05 to amend the qualifications for the City of Barberton's law director position and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. A motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 110 dash 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 110 dash 2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance number 111 dash 2025. Title: Amendment, City of Barberton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barberton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barberton at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City entitled Administrative Departments in Section 4.05F to allow and authorize the law director to make editorial corrections to the Charter shall be approved by resolution of City Council and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
...to the electors of the city of Barburton and at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 5 of the Charter of the City entitled Counsel in Section 5.11 to remove the requirement that six public places in the municipality be established if public posting is selected for the public notice in declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 112-2025.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 112-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance Number 112-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions in Section 6.03A to remove the requirement that three members of the Parks and Recreation Board be appointed by the mayor to remove the exceptions to the length of term served by the original members and to remove the requirement that the Barburton Board of Education appoint the two remaining members of the Parks and Recreation Board in declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 113-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on adoption.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance Number 114-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions in Section 6.03A to remove the requirement that three members of the Parks and Recreation Board be appointed by the mayor to remove the exceptions to the length of term served by the original members and to remove the requirement that the Barburton Board of Education appoint the two remaining members of the Parks and Recreation Board in declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion of suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous. Ordinance Number 115-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, certain amendments to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions in Section 6.04 to remove language allowing for a board of health in declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion of suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 115-2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 115-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on adoption.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance Number 116-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, an amendment to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions in Section 6.04B to allow the Civil Service Commission to appoint the Director of Human Resources in declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 116-2025.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 116-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on adoption.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance Number 117-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, an amendment to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions in Section 6.04C to remove language allowing for various boards and commissions and replacing with language allowing for any board or commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 117-2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 117-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on adoption.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance Number 118-2025 Amendment to City of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton and at the next regular November election, an amendment to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions creating Section 6.09 to require all boards and commissions in this charter to video and/or audio record and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rules required by Section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the rule on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 118-2025.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 118-2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of order, Director, this was read that boards and commissions in this charter, that's not what the draft says, correct? The draft was just, or the amendment was supposed to affect boards and commissions in Section 6, not all the charter.
Of the Article 6 of the charter.
To require all boards and commissions in this charter is the way it was read there.
Of the charter.
I think it modifies where it says Article 6 first.
Okay, I was just asking because the way this read, it says "in this charter." So I didn't know if that referred to, if that language is correct, then that would affect the entire charter, would it?
Yes.
And what does the draft say in the entire, in this charter?
Draft says, "An ordinance of the City of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Barburton at the next regular November election, an amendment to Article 6 of the Charter of the City entitled Boards and Commissions creating Section 6.09 to require all boards and commissions in this charter to video and/or audio record and declaring an emergency."
Right. Would you like to clarify?
The clarification, when I put this, when I requested this, it was to affect Section 6, not the entire charter. By the way this reads, it would include other boards and commissions not listed in Chapter 6.
The boards and commissions in the charter are in Article 6. Is there, I'm asking, are there other boards and commissions that aren't in Article 6?
Yes.
What was that?
The Charter Review Commission and the Board of Control. Those are outside of that, and it would be a logistical nightmare anytime you needed the Board of Control to meet in an emergency to have to set up video equipment or recorded equipment and all that.
Did we vote on suspension?
We haven't voted yet.
We voted on suspension.
Suspension, yeah.
Yeah.
We have voted on suspension. Well, we can either withdraw it, or if the board allow you to amend it, you can fix it, but I think you already suspended it, so I don't think you can amend it now.
Yeah, you'd have to withdraw your suspension.
I'm almost positive when I submitted this amendment, it was only to affect that chapter.
Every draft that I submitted said that, and if that was my misunderstanding, I don't know when, I was never caught before if I did that wrong.
What do you want to do?
Is this printed correctly, though, Councilman Hyatt?
I think that's what he's saying. Is it printed correctly?
It looks like it is printed correctly. Was it just read wrong the first time?
No, if you look at the ballot language, it says Article 6.
It says Article 6 of this charter, but later it says all boards and commissions in this charter.
Right, the call, the call, the first paragraph is not the ordinance. That's the call. That's the shorthand version of what's contained in the ordinance. So if...
Do you have the draft?
I do.
The actual article?
I do. So in, if you look at the ordinance, and it says, "Video broadcast recording that you're taking broadcast out. All boards and commissions within Article 6 of the charter shall be video and/or audio recorded."
So the call...
The ballot language says, shall, 6.09 of the Article 6 of the city amendment include language requiring all boards and commissions in this charter to video and/or record it. So the summary on the first side is definitely not what the ballot language is. But the call is not the ordinance. The highlighted boldened paragraph, that's the shorthand version of what's in the ordinance. The error is in the proposed ballot language.
So, yes, can this be changed at this point to reflect this?
If there's no law suspension, after a vote on suspension, you withdraw that amendment? Since there was no opposing.
I don't have the votes in front of me, and I don't have my legislative book, so I, I don't know if you can delay the vote on this one until I can get those and read them, or I don't know.
He said that there says Article 6, all boards and commissions in this charter.
Yes. I have the whole book up here if you want that. Do you have the 12 editions? Let me look.
The question is, Ms. Garrett, is this...
You got everything.
This is here. She just had to buy itself because this page is correct on the first page.
At the 1990 edition, this doesn't give you the number.
Yeah, that's way outdated.
1990, my God.
1990.
That's Bob's edition.
That's a little something.
That's like a phone book. Irrelevant.
That's what they're reading right now.
Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back. I was gonna say, no, it'll be closed by the time we get out of here.
All right, we're going to get back into this. Sorry about that. It is now 8:41 PM and we've come up with a solution to handle discrepancies. So, Mr. Heidick, if you would like to -- or Ms. Gerhart?
I would like to make a motion to reconsider the suspension.
All right, is there a second?
I will second Ms. Gerhart's motion to reconsider the suspension.
All right, just for clarity reasons, on the floor, can you call a roll on the motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
Motion, this is a roll call for the motion to reconsider the motion to suspend on 118-2025. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
All right, motion to reconsider the suspension carries. I understand that there's motions to amend.
I would like to make a motion to amend, and we need it to read just in Article VI, not in the whole charter.
In this section, right? We're changing this to "in this section." That should be recorded, that's all, and then "in section six of this charter."
Okay. So, city charter be amended to include language requiring boards and commissions in, and this is where we're changing it, section six of this charter to video and audio recorded.
And/or.
And/or audio recorded.
And this, I'm sorry, can you state that?
If you turn to the ballot, proposed ballot language.
We don't have that.
We don't have.
It's on the second page.
We don't have any of that.
We don't have any of that.
We don't have the ballots.
Oh, I apologize then. I'm going to read this in. The proposed charter amendment for, what number are we on?
118-2025.
118-2025 shall read, "Shall section 6.09 of Article VI of the city charter be amended to include language requiring boards and commissions in section six of this charter to video and/or audio record."
All right. Ms. Gerhart, do you have, would you like to redo that motion for an amendment? I'm trying, we got to.
I understand. Shall section 6.09 of Article VI of the city charter be amended to include language requiring boards and commissions in section six of this charter to video and/or audio recorded.
Okay. Is there?
I'd like to motion that we make this amend to this.
Thank you, is there a second?
I will second Ms. Gerhart's amendment.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to amend ordinance, the language in the draft for ordinance number 118-2025. Are there any other remarks about this? Clerk, we're going to have to do a roll call on this too, please.
This is the vote for a motion to amend.
Correct.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
All right, motion for amendment carries. Motion to suspend.
Re-suspend, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter for the amended ordinance of 118-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll for the suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries. Unanimous.
Ordinance number 118-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election a replacement of Article VII of the charter of the city entitled Elections and replacing with the new Article VII entitled Nominations and Elections, allowing for nonpartisan elections and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption is unanimous.
Ordinance number 119-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election an amendment to Article 12 of the charter of the city entitled Elections and replacing with the new Article 7 entitled Nominations and Elections, allowing for nonpartisan elections and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to adopt ordinance number 119-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Motion for adoption is unanimous.
Ordinance number 120-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election an amendment to Article 12 of the charter of the city entitled Amendments to Charter, revising section 12.02 to change certain deadlines, eliminate partisan requirements, and require a public hearing and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries, unanimous.
Ordinance number 120-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election an amendment to Article 12 of the charter of the city entitled Amendments to Charter, revising section 12.02 to change certain deadlines, eliminate partisan requirements, and require a public hearing and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Vote for adoption carries, unanimous.
Ordinance number 121-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election certain amendments to Article 4 of the charter of the city entitled Administrative Departments in section 4.02(c) to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the City Engineer and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries, motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 121-2025.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to adopt ordinance number 121-2025. Are there, are there any remarks? Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Mr. President. For clarification on the next three, these are, would change them to classified positions in the ordinance as well?
Yes.
Yes, it's very difficult to see, but in the, the "un," in the very last, the "un" is struck.
Yes.
In the.
Then, my comments for the next three is, I have to disagree with that part, portion of it. When an executive branch is elected, be it a mayor, be it a president, the people elected that person because of their vision and how they want to move the city forward. I don't believe hindering the executive branch is the right move. They should have the right to be able to put in place what they need to move the city forward that the voters chose. You look at the highest level of executive branch, how many presidents in our lifetimes have you loved some of their cabinet picks and absolutely loathed the other ones? But you can't deny that that executive branch had the right to put people in those positions, right, wrong, or indifferent, of your own opinion. I do believe that it's flawed that these are appointed by the mayor and not the person that they report to, but I also think it's a poisonous pill to have that classification changed, and I just have to disagree with that. I think in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, that is not going to be what should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidick. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries with seven.
Ordinance number 122-2025, amendment to city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election certain amendments to Article 4 of the charter of the city entitled Administrative Departments in section 4.02d to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the Superintendent of Utilities and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries with seven.
Ordinance number 123-2025, amendment city of Barburton Charter. An ordinance of the city of Barburton providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Barburton at the next regular November election certain amendments to Article 4 of the charter of the city entitled Administrative Departments in section 4.02b to change the appointing authority to the Director of Public Service for the Building Commissioner and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Beck to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yep.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries with seven.
This ends the first reading.
Second reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 94-2025 presented by Mr. Heidick. Title District Creation Downtown Barburton Community Entertainment District. An ordinance designating 105 acres in and around downtown Barburton, Ohio as the downtown Barburton Community Entertainment District pursuant to section 4301.80 of the Ohio Revise Code and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading. The first reading was on July 14, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick, is this going another reading, the third reading? It's going today?
Yep.
All right, motion to suspend. Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on suspension.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries, motion to adopt, Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 94-2025.
Thank you, and Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on adoption.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 94-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries, motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 123-2025.
Thank you, and Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mr. Easterling and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt ordinance number 122-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhart?
Yes.
for a term, appoint Mrs. Nina Angelo to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the term beginning immediately and ending 12/31/2026. Are there any remarks? Thank you, Nina. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Ayes have it. Ms. Lane is an unfinished business. We have none, so communication from? Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, I would like to move to the opinion of the council vote to combine all the charter amendments into one issue.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can I ask your comment?
Is there a second?
Not unless there's a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. A motion was made by Mr. Heidig and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to, what was the motion, to combine?
To combine the past charter amendments into one package.
To combine all the charter amendments into one package to be submitted to the Board of Elections. Are there any comments? Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you. Okay, so my only worry with this is that we have nonpartisan elections on here, and I feel like that is probably going to be pretty divided, and if there's somebody who doesn't agree with that, they're going to vote all of this down, all of this hard work that our commission, our council, just spent months and months on. So unfortunately, because everything is going through to the ballot, I think it should be separated. I know it's a lot, but I just think if there's one thing that somebody doesn't agree with, then it was all of that for nothing. So just my opinion.
Are there any other comments? One sec, Mr. Heidig. All right, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just believe that the council should have the option and vote on it.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Ms. Garrett?
I just, I don't think that we're going to get voters reading each and every one of these, and it's just going to be really hard to, to talk them through what all of that means versus combining this as a modernization of our charter for our city.
Are there any other remarks? Mr. Harris?
It's unfortunate that there is some things within our charter, such as the departmental heads living in the city, that was ruled unconstitutional years and years ago. It's also unfortunate that there are some things, such as term limits, that did not get brought to the floor, that we all should have gotten to vote on. I've been approached by many citizens asking me about this, and unfortunately I have to tell, tell them there's two council members that said no. I think all of us should have had the opportunity to vote on that. That's something that's important to many people that I've spoken to, and they should have the right to vote for that. We heard about suppressing people's vote. Well, that's exactly what happened here, was your vote amongst the 15,000 or so other registered voters don't have the opportunity to vote on something like that because of two people. Two people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any? Mrs. Miller?
I, um, I would, if you choose to do that, and I'm fine with that, I don't know what the Board of Elections is going to allow us to do. So I, if you do choose to do that, I will advocate for that. If you choose not to do that, it'll go separately. I just had a very difficult time trying to determine what language was required.
All right. Are there any other remarks about this motion? Seeing that it's an important motion, we're going to do a roll call, though. So clerk, can you call the roll on this motion? Sorry.
That's okay. I knew when that came out even that there was going to be. Okay, this is on the, this is a roll call on the motion to combine all the amendments to one to go to the Board of Elections.
Charter amendments.
Charter amendments.
Yeah. For this motion, I'm actually going to ask rules on this. Since all these charter amendments were a major majority when they were brought in, do you want to do a major majority? I, I'm asking rules, because strictly speaking, it's a majority when major majority brought them to the floor.
I'm so sorry. Can I just ask a question for clarification?
Sure.
If it is combined, what would that look like? Like, would that just be all changes to the charter, and it's not actually listed for voters, that they would have to do their research and see a list somewhere else?
I, I, that was one of my questions. It has been suggested that the, the charter that we had been looking at with the strike-throughs and so forth, that that document would be available at polling places, but I'm questioning whether that's viable since people vote, you know, at home. But the Board of Elections could have found a way to handle that. I'm just not clear. That was my, I was trying to find guidance on that. I couldn't get it.
Technically, it's not a charter amendment, so. That's, that's up to Council Gerhardt.
It doesn't need to be a supermajority. Like Mr. Heidig said, it's not a charter amendment.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ayes have it. That was to add it all as the one or not.
I just hope that she's had a way to.
That's not for us to figure out.
Thank you, Mr. G, Mr. President. I did bring this up in my committee tonight, but our Barberton Police Department received the game changer award from the Barberton Community Foundation, if you guys didn't notice. So congratulate them, and job well done. Thank you.
But we're moving into communication from the body, so. Miss Beck?
Mr. Harris, my line is open anytime. We've never spoken about it. You've never called me about it. So if you want to talk about it, we'll talk about it. I'll stand on my decision, but it'll be a private conversation.
Are there? We're not having a debate here. This is just for remarks. Any other communication from the body?
I have something I'm supposed to tell people, but my page is down. Oh, I'm sorry. You're behind this thing here, so I can't.
It's okay. I just want to say, when it comes to the charter amendment, I can see putting it all under one. I'm sure, you know, they'll have to figure out how they're going to word that on the ballot. I do worry that you're going to have somebody come out and vote no because they don't agree with one thing on there. If that's the case, there's always, next time, we can try to put it back on the ballot. But, um, I don't know. Everybody worked really hard, so hopefully people do their research and, you know, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Are there any other, anything from the body?
All right. I have one thing. We are going on August recess, so we will be back Tuesday, September 2, 2025. This is the Tuesday after Labor Day, and all committees will be meeting that day for the Committee of the Whole. Communications from department heads. I know, I seen you standing.
Right after you spoke about recess, I figure I may as well bring it to your attention. And I wanted to just make council aware that tomorrow we will be opening bids for Stratford Avenue. I would like to work with President Greer, Facilities Chair, Mr. Griffin, and Law Director, Mrs. Miller, and possibly have a special during the month of August so that we can award the job to the low bidder. So I'm not sure exactly what that would look like. I would love to be able to get it done tonight, but I know working with President Greer and Mrs. Miller, I'm hoping we can, we can get that accomplished so that I could get, you know, the letter recommendation from our engineer in front of council. You guys can discuss it, and then, like I said, if there's a way we can do it in one meeting, that would be great. I mean, we've all been talking about it for a while. We know it's coming, so just kind of keep that in mind.
Okay. Can I ask, when?
When you're figuring out when, so before your when question, when you figure out when, realize that I need to give public notice and you just need me a 24 hours. So give me that much ahead.
So typically, it takes about a week to get back the letter recommendation after they compile all the data due to tabulations. So I will make sure, though, that there's plenty of advance notice.
Okay. We'll try to figure it out. We'll be in contact.
And again, worst-case scenario, when we get back in September.
Yeah. And that will delay the project by waiting that long.
The reason why I would ask maybe for a special is because we know just from the previous three projects that procurement of materials is six to eight weeks out. So I mean, the sooner we can award, the sooner they can, we can give them a notice proceed, and then they can, they can start purchasing materials. So that, that's my only reason why I would even come to you during recess.
Okay. Good reason. We'll be in contact.
We're excited about Stratford, so do what you got to do.
I'm, I am.
Extremely excited.
I agree.
Is there anything else from, I was going to say department heads? Communication from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of piggybacking off of Councilman Harris, want to thank the Barberton Community Foundation for selecting the Barberton Police Department for game changer award. A few years ago, the Barberton Fire Department was awarded with the same award. Always bragging on our safety forces and what they do and how they protect us while we're, you know, home, living life, or sleeping, or what have you. So we have a lot of special people in those departments, so well deserved. I want to thank everyone who attended July's Change for Change, and I want to thank the Barberton Hungarian Club for hosting that event. Myself, couple council members, my assistant, met with Mr. Spiegel last week, walked around the block that he lives on, pointed out quite a few things. I kind of updated him. He moved on that street back in November, so I updated him what has happened in the last few years and some of the changes that have happened over the last few years, so. In addition to that, myself with my assistant, who she previously walked around Lake Hannah Park with Mr. Spiegel taking pictures, we walked around it again. I know the service director walked around it as well. We've met with the street department, the managers there. A lot of the issues that he brought up, we've been working on, and we've been making provisions to make changes and to address. So those will be happening here soon. I don't have an exact timeframe, but we also spoke to the gentleman that Mr. Spiegel has been advocating for. He walks every day. He's trying to build up his strength, and, you know, he's had some health issues, and so that's why he chooses to go on some of these pathways, so. But again, the point of the story is that we are addressing these issues, and some of them, like I said, we've been making plans for quite a while, so. Had the pleasure and opportunity to be on the Ray Horner Radio Morning Show last week. It's always a great time to explain all the good things going on in town, especially with infrastructure projects and grant funds and safety forces and housing developments and things of that nature. So a lot, a lot of great things going on. We did submit to the federal government for a grant for technology upgrades in the Justice Center. Councilwoman, excuse me, Congresswoman Sykes' office did push out our full request of 1.5 million from her office. We went to the Senate. It was pared down by $469,000, so it's $1,031,000, which is just an odd kind of cut. But nonetheless, we'll see how this plays out. She's advocating on her behalf, and we are as well to our U.S. senators. It's a long process to get to where we are today, to actually getting it approved. So I wouldn't anticipate anything this year, but we'll wait and see here as it plays out. Our homelessness task force continues to move forward. We've been working with a larger task force at the county level. We met last week, and we've been putting together for a while a roadmap for the unhoused and trying to fill in some of those gaps for full wraparound services. Still in draft form, and, you know, when you discuss it, it's one thing. When you put it on paper, you start seeing gaps that you got to fill, right? And so really looking at the draft form, but also what's happening in the world or in the country, and how that might trickle down to Summit County and to Barberton, and again, trying to fill those gaps. So a lot of work that's still, a lot of work has happened, but a lot more work has to happen. And, you know, trying to get a net for those that fall through the cracks, because every organization has their own criteria of who they're going to help, and you got to meet that criteria, and there's some people that fall through some of those cracks. So how do we catch, catch all those? So again, that's in draft form, continuing to work on that. The B C I C met this evening to talk about the sale of the May Street property. That's still moving forward and almost complete. We had the survey of the easement conducted and had that recently filed with the county, and they recorded that, so that's all done, so we're moving forward. America 250 Committee met today, and plans are continuing to be put together, working with council to have a picnic in your ward next year. So if you have multiple parks, we'll talk with you and try to have one park selected where you can have the award picnic, and so want to move that forward for the next few months, so we can have that for next year. Want to remind council, this Wednesday is a public meeting at the Akron Library, downtown Akron, to discuss the sale of Suma to Hatco and use of the sale proceeds. We met today reviewing the Summit County Suicide Prevention Recommendations and how this relates to our region. We've done a lot over the years to address suicide. We brought in a former NFL quarterback from the University of Michigan Depression Center, who spoke to all the kids at the high school and then did some talks to the general public afterwards. So we're looking at new ways to kind of market some of the programs that are out there. So if you're feeling depressed or you're having suicidal thoughts, how we can best address that and get the information out there in the public. So more information will be coming out about that soon as well. During the August break, I will be contacting council members individually to have meetings, and then also the ride-along. Councilman Heidig, we have one next week, I believe.
August 4.
Well, every time you reach out to me, it's raining, and I've got something else scheduled, but we are going to hook up here soon, so I'll be in contact with you, sorry. Other than that, you know, we've been, whenever there's a project, we try to collect email addresses from the residents or those that are directly affected by it, so we can provide email updates. There's a lot of projects that are happening now, a lot that are going to continue to happen. So we're working with our F S M on our website to just simply put a project page that we can just, instead of sending out email updates, you can just update everybody on the website on every type, every project that we're doing. So even if there's no updates for that week, we can just list that.